Good morning, everyone. Oh. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. This public hearing is now called to order. It's Thursday, May 11 at ten, 10:15 a.m. On today's agenda, we have two bills. Bill number eighty-two dash thirty-four is introduced by Senator M.C. Torres and Act to add Chapter Eight to Division One of Title Fifteen Guam Code Annotated Relative to Fiduciary Access to Digital Assets. We are also including in this public hearing an amendment to that bill which is to change the chapter number to Chapter Fifty, and we wanted to make sure that everybody had public notice of that. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on May four, 2017, and again on May nine. The notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on May five, 2017, and in the Pacific Daily News on May ten and May eleven, 2017. I'd like to thank my colleagues, Senator Torres and Senator Virginia Biscoley, for attending this morning, and I'd like to ask Senator Torres to please introduce Bill number eighty-two dash thirty-four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill number eighty-two dash thirty-four is an act to add Chapter Fifty to Title Fifteen Guam Code Annotated Relative to Fiduciary Access to Digital Assets. Chapter fifteen, by the way, is the Estates and Probate section of the Guam Code Annotated. And this bill was introduced because we believe that the Revised Uniform Fiduciary Access to Digital Assets Act as revised is necessary to modernize Guam's fiduciary law for the Internet age. And fiduciaries are the people that we appoint to manage our property when we die or lose the capacity to manage it ourselves. And the gist of the bill is, you know, we once lived in a tangible world of paper trails, and now our everyday lives are mostly operated by digital assets that drive how we interact with others socially or conduct our business. And as technology continues to advance and become a larger part of our personal lives, many of us find that we have increasing numbers of digital assets. These assets include any electronic record to which an individual has a right or interest, which can include, for example, our social media accounts, our emails, photographs, or any documents. And just think about the collection of documents that we personally have stored in clouds or the emails and text messages in our servers and the photographs that we upload through websites. For many of us, our tax returns, our bank statements, our music collections, our books, our utility bills and other bills that we have to pay exist only in the electronic record form. And we also are aware, most of us, that cybersecurity has resulted in many of measures that have been put in place to safeguard our digital information from falling into the hands of people that are not authorized. But when we need someone to handle our digital accounts and information, all of those safeguards and privacy measures that we put in place when we are alive and of sound mind and body are suddenly working against us if we die or incapacitated. Many of these terms of service agreements as well as federal and state laws do not contemplate that death or incapacity may prevent access to digital assets, and this is where the catch-22 comes in. We have some congressional acts such as the Stored Communications Acts that address the privacy and the use of our home computers. This Stored Communications Act creates privacy rights to protect the contents of our electronic communications and gumbers the conduct of our custodians, which is the companies that store these electronic communications. Many times, these inherent privacy rights prohibit such custodians from voluntarily disclosing a user's content to the government or to any person or entity unless an exception exists under these Stored Communications Acts. There are also instances where the fine print in the online server's Terms of Service Agreements prohibit third-party access, which would include a fiduciary from accessing an account because it exceeded the authorized access limits. And under this Fraud and Abuse Act, which is a federal anti-hacking act, just accessing this would be a crime. So to help address this problem, I introduce Bill eighty-two dash thirty-four, which is the Revised Uniform Fiduciary Access to Digital Assets Act, which establishes the standards for the handling of an individual's digital assets upon their death. It provides the legal authority for fiduciaries to manage their digital assets in accordance with a person's estate plans while protecting the user's privacy communication from unwarranted disclosure. There are many components of this act that work to the favor of people that have concerns over how their digital assets are going to be managed or how it will pass upon their death. And, you know, there are times where there are some things that we don't want to be passed on, say, if we're incapacitated, we want to ensure privacy. So this bill also empowers individuals to allow them to specify whether they want certain assets to be preserved or distributed to the heirs or destroyed. And this act also creates a uniformity even as our digital access travel across state lines as we move. It ensures that fiduciaries in every state will have equal access to the assets and custodians will have a single legal standard to comply. And that's the importance of having this uniform law is that this one standard will be the standard no matter where your, the application of your desires should fall. But it does not in any way infringe on our privacy rights as individuals to dictate how we want our assets to be distributed or disclosed. So, Madam Chair, that is generally the gist of the bill. It's a uniform bill that has been adopted in thirty states so far, and in this digital age, the idea and objective is to have jurisdictions adopt this standard and uniform act so that people that are dealing with estates either upon their death or in the event that they're incapacitated can have their matters dealt with and not find themselves in a very bad situation where banks
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. This public hearing is now called to order. It's Thursday, May 11 at ten, fifteen a.m. On today's agenda, we have two bills. Bill number eighty-two dash thirty-four, as introduced by Senator M.C. Torres, an act to add Chapter Eight to Division One of Title Fifteen Guam Code Annotated, relative to fiduciary access to digital assets. We are also including in this public hearing an amendment to that bill, which is to change the chapter number to Chapter Fifty, and we wanted to make sure that everybody had public notice of that. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on May four, twenty seventeen, and again on May nine. The notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on May five, twenty seventeen, and in the Pacific Daily News on May ten and May eleven, twenty seventeen. I'd like to thank my colleagues, Senator Torres and Senator Virginia Bisco Lee, for attending this morning, and I'd like to ask Senator Torres to please introduce Bill number eighty-two dash thirty-four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill number eighty-two dash thirty-four is an act to add Chapter Fifty to Title Fifteen Guam Code Annotated, relative to fiduciary access to digital access assets. Chapter Fifteen, by the way, is the estates and probate section of the Guam Code Annotated. And this bill was introduced because we believe that the Revised Uniform Fiduciary Access to Digital Assets Act, as revised, is necessary to modernize Guam's fiduciary law for the Internet age. And fiduciaries are the people that we appoint to manage our property when we die or lose the capacity to manage it ourselves. And the gist of the bill is, you know, we once lived in a tangible world of paper trails, and now our everyday lives are mostly operated by digital assets that drive how we interact with others socially or conduct our business. And as technology continues to advance and become a larger part of our personal lives, many of us find that we have increasing numbers of digital assets. These assets include any electronic record to which an individual has a right or interest, which can include, for example, our social media accounts, our emails, photographs, or any documents. And just think about the collection of documents that we personally have stored in clouds, or the emails and text messages in our servers, and the photographs that we upload to websites. For many of us, our tax returns, our bank statements, our music collections, our books, our utility bills, and other bills that we have to pay exist only in the electronic record form. And we also are aware, most of us, that cybersecurity has resulted in many of measures that have been put in place to safeguard our digital information from falling into the hands of people that are not authorized. But when we need someone to handle our digital accounts and information, all of those safeguards and privacy measures that we put in place when we are alive and of sound mind and body are suddenly working against us if we die or incapacitated. Many of these terms of service agreements, as well as federal and state laws, do not contemplate that death or incapacity may prevent access to digital assets. And this is where the catch-22 comes in. We have some congressional acts, such as the Stored Communications Acts, that address the privacy and the use of our home computers. This Stored Communications Act creates privacy rights to protect the contents of our electronic communications and gumbers the conduct of our custodians, which is the companies that store these electronic communications. Many times, these inherent privacy rights prohibit such custodians from voluntarily disclosing a user's content to the government or to any person or entity unless an exception exists under these Stored Communications Acts. There are also instances where the fine print in the online server's terms of service agreements prohibit third-party access, which would include a fiduciary from accessing an account because it exceeded the authorized access limits. And under this Fraud and Abuse Act, which is a federal anti-hacking act, just accessing this would be a crime. So to help address this problem, I introduce Bill eighty-two dash thirty-four, which is the Revised Uniform Fiduciary Access to Digital Assets Act, which establishes the standards for the handling of an individual's digital assets upon their death. It provides the legal authority for fiduciaries to manage their digital assets in accordance with a person's estate plans while protecting the user's privacy communication from unwarranted disclosure. There are many components of this act that work to the favor of people that have concerns over how their digital assets are going to be managed or how it will pass upon their death. And, you know, there are times where there are some things that we don't want to be passed on, say, if we're incapacited, we want to ensure privacy. So this bill also empowers individuals to allow them to specify whether they want certain assets to be preserved or distributed to the heirs or destroyed. And this act also creates a uniformity, even as our digital access travel across state lines as we move. It ensures that fiduciaries in every state will have equal access to the assets, and custodians will have a single legal standard to comply. And that's the importance of having this uniform law, is that this one standard will be the standard no matter where your, the application of your desires should fall. But it does not in any way infringe on our privacy rights as individuals to dictate how we want our assets to be distributed or disclosed. So, Madam Chair, that is generally the gist of the bill. It's a uniform bill that has been adopted in thirty states so far, and in this digital age, the idea and objective is to have jurisdictions adopt this standard and uniform act so that people that are dealing with estates either upon their death or in the event that they're incapacitated can have their matters dealt with and not find themselves in a very bad situation where bank accounts cannot be accessed because of privacy rights, or if you wanted your children to inherit your collection of personal memorabilia and photos, that those things can also be passed on. So it not only addresses your, some of your business and financial type of information, but it also includes some of those nostalgic things that perhaps have a lot of value to people when they're, or to the heirs of people when they pass on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Torres. There is no one signed up to testify at this time, but I will continue to accept, the committee will continue to accept testimony for ten days following this hearing, and you can submit that by email to senatorterlahiguam@gmail.com.
Senator Bisco Lee, did you have any comments on, or questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Senator Torres. Just two questions regarding the bill. I wanted to know if you could just walk us through how it might work? So if somebody in my family in the future passed away, would there, is there a requirement for written authorization for this law to, for them to be covered? And let's say they named me as a fiduciary, I would have access to their digital assets, but only if I'm named in their will, or they have to explicitly say that I have access?
What it does is, this bill applies to a fiduciary acting under a will or a power of attorney executed before the effective date of this act. It also applies to a personal representative acting for a decedent who died before or after this, or a guardian proceeding that commenced before or after the date, or a trustee acting under a trust created before or after this act. So it's those people that have a valid and legal cause to act on your behalf. It applies to custo, also to custodians if you reside in Guam or reside in Guam at the time of your death. It doesn't apply to digital assets of an employer that are used by an employee in this. So generally, what it, the way that it works is you have the right to express your desires for the disposition of your digital assets, and it is, this type of law would then be recognized by those companies, for example, Google or Facebook or a bank who has custody of your accounts. This law would supersede those federal laws that are in place right now that prohibit anybody but you from accessing it. Yeah, so that's, that's the idea, is to give express desire for how you would like things to be handled when you die or if you can't act for yourself.
Thank you so much for that clarification. And one last question. In the event that someone fraudulently claimed to be a fiduciary and was somehow granted access to the digital assets and maybe tampered with them or deleted any information, are there, is it explicit in the law that there would be any penalties? Or would it just be the penalties already associated with crimes of that nature?
My understanding is that a fiduciary would have to pass certain qualifications for them to be lawfully recognized as a fiduciary or custodian or agent. So it's not as easy as somebody saying, here I am, and do this for me. There are legal tools in place that would determine who is a qualified and legally recognized agent for you. And, you know, those would involve legal instruments like a will that is, that is in probate, or a valid power of attorney that is recognized by the courts, that sort of thing, or a legal custody act that's determined by the courts as well. So it's not as easy as that. And then you've got to understand that we're, you know, this does not supersede necessarily the terms that are secured by law, but it does allow an exception where there's an express designation by the person. So I, and this again was, is a unified, it's a uniform law that was created by the Uniform Law Commission, and it was done, it was actually revised after there were some concerns about those agents that were controlling that. So it did pass the muster for fraud and unforeseen type of activities. And that's why the, it's important also in adopting this law that it conforms to the model legislation, otherwise it's not as effective or will not be as easily recognized by other states if it doesn't have exactly the same terms and conditions. So that's what we're aiming to do.
Okay, thank you. And, Madam Chair, I just wanted to request if there have been any letters of support or opposition to this legislation?
I haven't received any to date.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both.
I want to thank the sponsor for this bill. I think it brings to light the need for people to plan, and it will highlight, for having this bill now, remind us all and to actually make these types of long plans for ourselves and our loved ones, and to take care of these digital assets, which I agree with the sponsor that these are very valuable nowadays in our current culture, and that the act is, it's a uniform act. It's been endorsed by Google and Facebook, and so they agree to comply if our state laws comply with a uniform act close enough. And I think, yeah, I agree with the sponsor that it has protections in here. Of course, there are already existing laws that make it illegal to do otherwise, and but this exception is very limited, and so that the custodians may need to obtain court orders if they don't have any of the other required evidence that's necessary to prove that you are the new custodian or the representative. Did you want to give a closing statement, Senator?
I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your presence and testimonies this morning. I'm going to correct my earlier statement and say that I will only accept testimony until Monday at noon, because committee reports are due on Monday, the fifteenth, May fifteen, and in order to get this bill on the next session, I would like to have the committee report done by that day. So I will be accepting testimony at senatorterlahiguam@gmail.com until noon on Monday, May fifteen. So this concludes the testimony on Bill eighty-two dash thirty-four C O R. There being no additional individuals to present for the testimony, this committee will continue to remain open for the testimony I described earlier. You may submit, you may also submit testimony to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature. Thank you very much, Sizouz Mossi, for your presence and public testimony this morning. The public hearing is now adjourned. Time is ten, ten thirty-three a.m. Thank you very much.